We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance and Mike Holsheiser, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a little executive privilege here before we ask for any comments or invitation of a citizen. Sean, you want to step up? I'd like to introduce to everybody our new IT specialist, Sean Plowman. Sean, welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you and hear a lot of good things about you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll be seeing a lot of you. Okay. At this time, is there any citizens that would like to schedule a time for presentation to the board or any concerns that they may have? If not, we have the approval of the agenda. Commissioners or any staff, is there anything on the agenda that needs to be changed or clarified?
We spoke about item J.
Yes.
The Community of Opportunity Initiative. The resolution that was included in your packet is not something that we should probably be approving. It was written for the city of Bruce to approve, I think, with Bob. I think Bob went to their meeting last night. So Bob, I think, will have more information and at that time, I think, we'll leave it on the agenda more for discussion, but I think down the road, there will probably be a resolution specifically for the county to approve, but we can discuss that at that time.
Okay. And Bob, during your report, if you'd like, feel free to make some comments about that for the sake of time and your time schedule as well. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, any other changes or additions that any commissioner would have? If not, we have our consent agenda items, the approval of the minutes, travel education, personnel action, our cellular allowances, and the human services report. Are there any questions or clarifications that need to be made on any of those? If not, we'll approve the consent agenda without objection. Moving on to our routine business is approval of claims. Chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Falcon, second by, was it Wyeth? Any discussion, questions?
What's this blank sheet here?
That was an additional claim. Oh, no, that's coming up.
Oh, that's.
That's information on the resolution regarding the liens. But there was a claim in front of you this morning on your desk that is for Department of Revenue. You can see what the items are broken out there and the total amount. And that is included now, waiting for approval today.
I had the Department of Revenue take some of my blood one time, but I don't remember blood tests. How do we pay for blood tests for Department of Revenue?
The blood tests are through the PD.
For our staff.
No, for the police department, I believe.
Oh, okay.
That's blood tests that for DUIs and things like that.
They're charged and when they're in court, they pay for that.
Right.
They get, comes back, but it's something that we pay out.
We pay upfront to the Department of Revenue, yeah.
Any other questions, comments on the claims? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we'll move on to our department heads. Mike, you're sitting in the audience there this morning. Do you have anything that you'd like to bring forward?
Good morning. Well, just that, I forgot to turn in my travel request, but next week, I will be going to Sioux Falls twice. We are rewriting the welfare manual for all the counties and I've volunteered to be on that committee. So I'll be gone Thursday for that. And then Tuesday, we have a meeting down there in regards dealing with homeless. Otherwise, Veterans Affairs has been going real well. We've been getting a number of people in. And I guess Abby's been helping get us motivated to clear up some old files. They were before I even started. They're back in Mark's time, so we're slowly working through them.
Okay, good. Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. Oh, let's see, we'll start on the far end. Bob Hill.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. September 30th, we had our National Preparedness Month Day event. Gave away two weather radios and the venue was moved from the third floor down to the first floor and we had more people this year than last year. And most of them was people that we knew, we engaged. They, I don't know if they came voluntarily or not, but they, once they walked in that door, we had them. And we made sure they was prepared on their way out. And winners, we did draw the winner of the two radios. One was Commissioner Miller and the other one was Belinda Cruz down at the, it just got lucky. I mean, we didn't have, we only had probably 30 names in the bucket. We had Ray Dorn draw the names, so it was a legitimate draw. Next year, we will get together all the facts that we did this year and we'll try to make it better next year, maybe change the venue or get more players or we'll just have to evaluate on where to have it at next year and what to do. Maybe piggyback of some other larger event and might be better. Our Homeland Security Grant submission was scheduled for tomorrow and they shifted that back now to Thursday, so I put a travel request in. Apparently, there was two travel requests put in for me, one for me and one from the sheriff. And we will be going Thursday over to Metro to vote as a region on our Homeland Security Grant. And at the last meeting, I told you there was three submissions. Well, the Homeland Security Office took one of the submissions out, disapproved one of them from their level. So now, there's only, there's two up for consideration from Brookings County. And we're going to fight for both of them. We had to rank them one, two, but we're going to fight for both of them and see if we can get them. The hazmat plan, I went to Bruce last night and presented the hazmat plan to them and explained to them what the hazmat plan was. I also gave the city of Brewster pre-disaster mitigation plan, which this board approved earlier. And I discussed the co-op thing, which I think you want me to discuss now. Go ahead and discuss it now, so we don't have to do it at a later time. And I'll pass these out.
I think we got one, Bob, or is it this one?
I don't know if yours is the latest or not. I had an eight o'clock revision this morning, but basically, in a nutshell, I'll tell you what I told the city of Bruce last night before they passed their resolution. And this project isn't, we're in the running for a project to help small communities possibly get like, slipped my farmer's markets and stuff like that. Try to get the, we, our big farms, we take care of them, they're taken care of, big farms and the big livestock operations, this type of thing. And it's, we've applied for a program that would give us three years of advice from the federal level on how to manage, bring the commodities into the small towns. This is not a new concept. The concept's been around for many years. And sometimes, we get focused on one type of agricultural versus other type, but I think it's a win-win for the county if we get selected. At this stage, all, at this stage, all we are is we're in the running, one of the finalists. And Brookings County has to set through an interview in Lexington, Kentucky, which there was a travel request in your thing that was approved. So, and this handout that was done, prepared to you, the revised version, we'll be taking that and a presentation will be given to the board and to make their final decision. And if we win or get selected, then we would be, we'd get all the assistance. I don't believe there's going to be any financial assistance, but there's also not going to be any financial assistance required from us going back out. It's just more, you get the advice from the people. Did you have any questions from what you read on that? The city of Bruce, there was a resolution put in there, the city of Bruce did approve that last night. And, you know, obviously, we'll keep the board more involved. There's a list of local food advocates on this particular list and I've instructed my staff to go ahead and reach out to other advocates of food in the area, such as Ag United, and there'd be other organizations that, because we support all of our farmers in Brookings County. We don't, we don't, you know, the number of acres that you farm doesn't, is really irrelevant when it comes to agricultural and the products that you can produce. Moving right along, any questions on that?
It's interesting to see the number, whatever the criteria is to be called a farm, that the number of farms has increased in the county.
Yep, that really has.
And I think I've seen some data where of the 1,023 farms, less than 100 produced 90% of the product in the county.
I guess what we're looking for here is a consensus from the board that you're willing to support this, I think is what we're looking for today versus a resolution type thing. We may bring a resolution back at the following meeting, but, you know, with us going to Kentucky so soon, we just, we felt we didn't have time to get the resolution published properly the way it needed to be done for the public to see. So, does the board have a consensus, positive, negative, neutral?
I think it's fine. It's just another project, the small communities want to get involved in things, why we should encourage them, in my opinion.
It's like I was telling the city council last night, there's, you know, I gave my business card in case there's severe weather or something, I said, "Call me anytime," because there's no I in team and we need to work as a team, whether you live in Bruce or Elton or the city of Brookings. Okay, I will make sure that's relayed.
Robert did contact me. And of course, the key word in the letter that's in your packet with the travel request was, "They're paying for everything." And obviously, she picked up on it at one of her previous meetings and made a good impression, obviously, to put us as a finalist, which was great. And one of my former students is with that end of the state extension in Sioux Falls and I called her and she said it's a great program and was supportive of it and pretty impressed that Brookings got in the hunt, so.
And I expressed it to the person that did the application, that this is not an individual project, by any stretch of imagination. It's a Brookings County project, Brookings County development project. It's not going to be one-person project, it's going to be a county, county project. I did have my scouting presentation the other night and I barely survived that. I can tell you, there's a difference in instructing or giving a presentation to people in nursing homes versus a bunch of little Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts. The PPCC meeting is Thursday, so I'll have to miss that when I attend. I've got to go to Homeland Security Conference, so Ms. Thoreau will be at the October 9th PPCC meeting. And if any county commissioners are available, I, they're going to talk, it's a two-hour table, modified tabletop exercise, discussing some of the new health threats that's hitting us. And it doesn't, all you have to do is look at the news and this, whether it's the flu coming out of, that's affecting children, or if it's Ebola, we know we got different health threats coming. And so, it would be a good exercise if anybody has time to attend.
And that, once again, that date and time?
It is October 9th. And I want to say 12 to 2, but I, you could contact me when I got my other calendar in my hand and I could tell you exactly, but I'm going to say, I'm thinking it's 12 to 2 and you'd be eligible for a free meal if you show up to that, because it's long. But check with me on the final time. Be over at the hospital conference room. And on Thursday night, I'm, I'll be up at Deer Creek Station with the emergency responders, talking about the base and electric people. And it's like tomorrow, I got a safety conference in Sioux Falls. And other than that, the, I'll literally be out of the office from the 15th of October to the end of October, either on vacation or in meetings, conferences that's been approved. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Equalization, Joyce, did you have anything you wanted to present to us this morning?
Morning. To all of you, I haven't been here for a while, so I've got a few updates from our office. The four gentlemen in my office attended school mid-September. Three of them took an IAAO course, which is a very extensive, week-long training on the income approach to value. And I'm happy to say, all three of them did very well on it and Jacob Bremmer received 100%. So he did very, very well. And those classes are not for the week and they're very, very difficult. And Jerry took a class on conditioning and quality and it was put on by Vanguard Company, which is based out of Iowa, which they have now come into South Dakota as one of our costing manuals. And so, we're now, counties can choose between Marshall and Swift and Vanguard. And this class was put on by a Vanguard appraiser and Jerry said it was good, you just had to put your head around Vanguard versus Marshall and Swift. But all four of them did very well in class, so. I attended an Ag Task Force meeting in Pierre, the middle of September. They're still talking easements, they're still talking actual use. And the actual use proposal got a little interesting. They asked SDSU to put together a proposal of what it would cost to have SDSU study and analyze and develop the acres in South Dakota and their actual use. So SDSU is supposed to return in October to say what it would cost to, because right now, we're using highest and best use of the soil types. Should we go to actual use, none of us are sure where these numbers are going to come from. And so, that's an issue. It was also mentioned that most of the Ag groups stated that they were in favor of actual use. And during the Ag Task Force meeting, the chairperson challenged the Ag groups to put their money where their mouth was. So we'll see if we can get any funding out of the Ag groups to pay for this study. So October meeting could be interesting. They are also talking Ag criteria, changing that, which became a Pennington County issue last year, changing their 40 acres to 160 acres, which they had lines out the door challenging that. So they reverted back to the 40 acres, but it's still an issue in Pennington County. The east counties are saying fix it in Pennington County, so I don't know where this is going to go either, coming out of Task Force, but we'll see it in legislation, I know that, so. Chris, from my office, attended the ProVal conference in New Orleans a couple of weeks ago. It was very informative. He said they're going to be changing that up. When we purchased ProVal, our CAMA system, it was a very small program maintained within the company. Thomson Reuters has now bought out all of this and so, the conference itself has become very large. ProVal is now a little piece of that pie and there could be changes coming down that pike. But at that conference, I can toot Brookings County's horn a little bit. A previous employee in our office, Matt Archer, was an appraiser in our office from 2005 until 2009. And during that time, he was given the title of half-appraiser, half-ProVal management. And Yankton snapped him up from us in 2009 and he went down to Yankton County and he's been working there. And he was given at the ProVal conference, the Excellence in Business Process Transformation Award. Very nice picture of him on our South Dakota website. And he was recognized for turning Yankton County around on a new CAMA system in a short amount of time. Well, we know where he learned his expertise in ProVal and the whole program. And so, he was able to take his knowledge from Brookings County, turn Yankton County around in a short amount of time and he was recognized for that. So, but it all started here, so. From Brookings, you can go anywhere. So that was exciting for us. I visited with Lake County a couple of weeks ago. The commissioners and their director and their state's attorney had asked me to come down and visit with them about our Beacon site and where we were, how we got where we are and how it's going. And I just left so thankful that I'm here in Brookings and we have what we have. They're starting at the bare bones and they have Beacon, but they don't have enough to put it out there for the general public yet. They don't have enough to really sell it to subscribers. They have such a little process. But I hope I help them in where they need to back up and start over and get it going well with their GIS and their information. They don't have a CAMA system, so they have no household information, commercial information. They have owner's names, legals, values and taxes, which is the little bit we give away free. So they have a long way to go, but I encourage them to keep going with it, because it's a very valuable employee for any county government, so. But that was an interesting afternoon to see what they have and I, again, I'm thankful to come back here and use all of our bells and whistles that we have. Vicky polled our numbers over last week and everything balanced from the assessor's side to the tax side, so that's always a good breath of fresh air for both Vicky and I, so that's good. The appraisers, all of us, the five of us that are certified appraisers in our office are all out doing building permits and rechecks and new construction, so that's our busy time of year, so our vehicles are going majority of the day. Jacob, Chris and I and Jason are going to Mitchell on Thursday to a pictometry presentation, what's new with pictometry. And Chris and I will be attending a district meeting in Sioux Falls next week for the assessors, so. Any questions?
On the 24th, I attended a First Planning District meeting in Sioux Falls. And they gave a demonstration of a, they are actually building a valuation mapping system, GIS system, through First District. And was able to demonstrate that and I was very, very impressed with it. Now, they're not done with it, they're doing some testing on it, but they are indicating that, you know, they're going to make that user-friendly and the cost, they feel, will be substantially less to the counties. And it's going to be, going to be something that, again, can be shared, we can charge to let people on the site. You know, I'm, you know, it's going to be comparable to Beacon, I think. And Madison was there.
Were they?
Their commissioners were represented and they talked a little bit and the mayor was there about where they're at too. And I think it's, it looked like, you know, from the, just where they're at today, that they're really making strides in putting that together. I mean, it was, I mean, I've seen Beacon, I've seen, you know, some of the things it can do and it had everything that I saw and I don't know the internal side of what things you need, but I mean, they had, I mean, they just shot on a house from the rooftop, street side, I mean, everything was on that site and I don't know. And they feel they're just, there will be a very small maintenance fee, annual fee for that, once they get it up and running. So I want you to keep abreast of that, not, I want to lay them side by side. I don't want to come in and tell you, you need to, you need to go that direction, but I do, I do think that we need to look seriously at it to see if it's something that'll work for us and if it can save us money and it's, it possibly could be.
I'd be very interested in seeing that.
And it's just, it's not another state away for assistance.
Right, for training.
Fifty miles down the road, so just, I don't know if you were aware of that or?
No, I am not. I hadn't heard a word about that, so keep me posted on that. And if there's another demonstration, I would really like to see it.
I think what they're going to do is when they get this up and running in Cottington County, they're going to probably come down and demo it. And I said, "That's what I want." I don't want you to come down and come to the commission and say, you know, "We can save you money, do this if it's not going to work for equalization."
Right.
Or the, you know, finance. We've got to make sure that they're on board with it, so we can lay them side by side and look at the program, so.
Well, I'm sure Cottington County is excited about it, because they have had First District for years and it's, it's been a long way from Beacon. So I'd be, I'd be interested to see this new product and see that they've improved.
And you could sure talk to them now to get some information.
Yeah, I will.
They probably should.
I'll visit with, I'll visit with the director up there too.
Todd Keyes, you know, there's a couple of guys working, Ryan.
Ryan.
Ryan's working with it, but there's another guy that's kind of in charge of it.
Yep, okay, good. I, if, yeah, I would really like to see a demonstration of that. I'd be very interested.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wyeth? Yeah, you said something that touched on my ignorance and inner workings of our departments, but you said you inspect, you're going out on the building permits. And you get those from Bob's office?
And the city.
Yeah, and then you, yeah, well, I'm worried about what goes on out there, I guess, in this case. And you make sure they're building where they said they were going to build or do you get, just in the valuation of it, or do you, oh, this building permit says it's supposed to be located here on the property, not here?
We get the legal description, Tom. And that legal description could be 100 feet by 165 feet, or it could be a quarter of land. So we get the parcel number slash legal description of where they are proposing. Richard does a really good job of printing a Beacon map on the farm site and then he'll draw an X of where they say they're going to build that. But as far as measuring and making sure it's exactly where they said it would be, no, that's, that's not our realm. We're there to measure the building and get a value on it.
I'm just kind of curious, because we've got, you know, 400 square miles to babysit and we only have so many staff members and if somebody goes in and gets building permit, everything's great and they figure, nobody's ever going to drive by or check this.
We always tell people, if you get a building permit and build, we will come, so.
I'm not the, I was thinking from the evaluation side, yes, but.
We do not verify, yeah, we do not verify the legal. But Richard, in the zoning office, does a great job of mapping where they say they're going to put it. And so, we can usually find it very easily and it's usually pretty shiny and new, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you.
You are welcome.
I think, Vicky, I'm going to have to defer a bit, because we do have nine o'clock. Carrie, Mr. Brett from CDI is here and he was willing to come and visit with us and kind of give us a little background and bring us up to date on some of the preliminary work that he was so kind to do, as he was doing some other work. We can understand this now? Okay. And this is all in regard to 213th Street, or better known as often referred to as the Navita Road over by Aurora. Yeah. And as you can tell, Carrie, we're all aware that we've been working with this project for, looks like, year and a half, two years now, because I see you're dated 6/27/13.
Right, you can see my estimate is dated 2013, so costs may have gone up maybe 6% to 8%.
And I think some of the questions that we had was the amount of right-of-way you were working with and what the potential is to expand it or not expand it or whatever, so.
Right.
I'll just kind of turn it over to you and.
Well, and that's why I brought this drawing. And essentially, all this drawing is showing you is a typical road section and then it shows you the different right-of-way widths. Now, the original intent, as I understood it, was to try to keep the road within the existing right-of-way, which is 66 feet. Okay, if you look at the top cross-section there, you can see that the right-of-way is shown at 66 feet. If you, if we were to build a typical section road in that 66 feet, you can see that the ditch falls outside of the right-of-way in a typical section, okay? If you look at the left side of the top cross-section right here, you can see that the ditch, the bottom of the ditch actually falls outside of the right-of-way. And so, Don called me, what, two weeks ago and we visited about this a little bit and he asked about different right-aways. And so, I showed, I also put on there a 70-foot right-of-way, which isn't significantly different, but you can see that between 70 and 100, actually, if we went 80 feet, the bottom of the ditch would actually fall within our right-of-way. would actually fall within our, our right-of-way. Now, if, if we're looking at expanding the right-of-way, there is a residence on the north side that will be very close, and we may have some, I mean, it's possible we could have some difficulty obtaining right-of-way there if we wanted to expand the right-of-way. I do know that there is a utility line, there's a water line located on the north side at about the right-of-way line. So that may also impact what we're trying to do. There's a power line there as well. And I know, I had discussion with Sioux Valley, maybe two years ago now, about that line. They were talking about replacing that line. And they asked me what we were going to do with the right-of-way on that. And I said, well, as far as I know, we were, weren't expanding the right-of-way at that time. So if we wanted to expand that right-of-way, we could take a closer look at that. But of course, we haven't done any engineering on this really at all at this point. We haven't been authorized to do anything. We put together a preliminary estimate, and just so we had some budget numbers to work with. And, and then this typical section is just food for thought, I guess, as to which way you'd like to go.
Questions for Kerry?
What are your thoughts?
Well, obviously, you know, if you end up not expanding the right-of-way, you would probably end up with a much smaller ditch. I mean, we would have to, we would have to try to keep the ditch bottom within the existing right-of-way. And in order to do that, you're going, you're going to have to build a smaller ditch. We probably wouldn't have the room to really expand the ditch much. And in that area, I would guess that the primary purpose of a larger ditch would be for snow storage. Because you, obviously, you have to have someplace to push the snow, once you, once you get out there. And, and this is a road that will be heavily traveled and will have to be kept open. So having that larger ditch is a big advantage in terms of, of snow removal and snow storage. So it would be really nice to have at least 80 feet, I think.
Kerry, is, is that water line on the north side in the existing right-of-way now?
I don't know for sure, Don. I think, I think it's right at about the right-of-way line.
Okay. You don't know which side it's on, if it's on private or?
That I don't know for sure. Until we actually do some engineering and, you know, get some additional information, we don't know exactly.
Mr. Chair, for safety's sake, are, would the 66-foot right-of-way be adequate? Because that isn't, the ditches are not going to be deep there, are they?
No. And actually, we don't really need the ditch for water conveyance all that much because the soils out there are primarily granular. So if we do end up with some ponding, the water essentially just goes down. It goes straight down through the soil.
This drawing that you gave us, one side's got dotted lines that heads off, and the other is the drawing of the ditch. Is that, what's the existing ditch? Is it outside the right-of-way?
No. But the in-slopes.
This is a drawing of what you would make.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
This is, this is a standard DOT-type section.
Well, I want to build a good road. I want a safe road, but, you know, it's 214th that someday is going to be taking a ton of traffic, you know, somewhere out there, because that's 20th Street in Brookings, and they do the overpass. There's not that many residents down 213. I, I look at this as a driveway for Novita. And as long as we can have a safe conveyance and maybe, you know, post 35 miles an hour, we want, you don't want these trucks, not good for a road to be, trucks going at high rate of speed either, is it, if they're fully loaded?
No.
Yeah, so for the sake of the road, slower speed. I guess I'd lean right now, barring some professional advice, sticking with the 66 feet. And I know you're concerned about snow, and, but it's going to be expensive, snow.
Yeah.
Collection area, and the residents involved. But, I mean, you can build an adequate base and everything for, to handle these trucks.
Oh, sure.
66, whatever, right? Okay.
Yeah, we can do it. Yeah, it's just, the in-slopes, where it shows four to one, we may end up with a steeper in-slope on the roadside, so it may end up three to one. You know, which is three horizontal to one vertical.
Yeah, and I would totally agree. I, I want a safe road. You know, we're going to have trucks under, meeting each other, and as long as it's wide enough and we're not going to have any issues, I, I don't want to encroach upon any more property out there. I know you have only one residence along there, but if we don't have to take any more right-of-way, I think that'd be the right thing to do, as long as we build a, you know, a safe road and it meets the needs of what, what it is. And I agree with Tom. I, I think with what probably will happen a mile away into the future, this is just basically going to be a driveway to the business, and, but I want a safe one. I want something that people that, if they're meeting vehicles or whatever on there, are still going to be safe.
Well, what we've showing here is a 28-foot top, so it's got two 12-foot driving lanes and two 2-foot shoulders. And so that's adequate room for, you know, trucks to, to pass on that road. One thing I will say is that in DOT standards, the four-to-one is considered a recoverable slope. So if you happen to get a wheel out onto the four-to-one, you can get back. A three-to-one is not. So you have to keep that in mind.
Question, I guess. I'm kind of on the same boat with these guys, but I, would it, would it be advantageous to look at where the main turns are going to be at and potentially get some increased right-of-way in a certain area? Because, you know, the truck turns, obviously, they got to get themselves a pretty good turn. We don't want them going in the corner. The access to Novita, is there, is there room enough to their, after we come off of this road into their property? Will, will there be enough turning radius for, for those vehicles?
We will have adequate turning radius without having a turn lane. Considering the number of residents and the number of vehicles that are on this road, I don't think it would warrant having turn lanes.
Okay.
I think it would be an additional expense that wouldn't be necessary.
How about the, how about the access on high, on the road that goes through Aurora there?
Well, we may, we may want to look at some turn lanes there. You know, maybe a left turn lane and a right turn lane. We may want to look at something there. I, I think that would be worth looking at because there's, you're probably talking in the neighborhood of 300 to 400 trucks a day to serve this facility. And so it, at that intersection, it may warrant that. And the, the other thing you may want to look at is, and, and I think the speed is 55 up to about that intersection, right? And Dick probably would know this, but you may want to dial the speed down a little bit before you get to that intersection, just as a safety consideration. And, and quite frankly, on 213th, I don't know why the speed would have to be over 45 either.
Only a little ways.
Pardon me?
It's only a little ways.
Right.
That's an excellent point about the Aurora Road, Dick, whatever the number is. But when that was paid for, the state paid for that entirely. And if we add that to our project, does our current grant cover that? Can we ask, this would be a separate request to the state. But I think that's an excellent point, that that road, what's the number, Dick? 23, probably needs some turning lanes and it would be seriously looked at. I just wonder who's paying for it? And is our current grant covered, or is it going to be all on our tab? And that. You maybe don't know. I'm kind of asking the commissioners and anybody else that would.
We can, if we, if we do a traffic study on there, we can actually look at what would be warranted on the county road right now, in terms of turning lanes and things like that. If it doesn't warrant, I wouldn't spend the money for it at this time if it was me. Because you can, you can add turning lanes later as well.
Just wondering what Dick has to think about the, the ditch and everything.
I guess I think those turn lanes off of 23 will probably have merit, simply because there'll be trucks coming from the south, turning across traffic, going west, and the ones coming from the north that'll go west. And when they come back out, they're going to have to either go north or south. I, I think to keep the flow and movement of traffic at a, a safe and judgeable rate, we're, we're going to need some form of turning there to control that, kind of like they do where they turn off a 14 onto 23. It, it's, it really relieves a lot of that guesswork for other drivers in that area. With costs, if there's constraints there, Kerry's absolutely right. It's something you can always add, or you could modify to make it work, because you could increase the radius or something to, to allow a freer flow of traffic. But I guess in a perfect world, if you were going to ask him to design the project, I would have him do the turn lanes, beef up the road, get, get a good idea of what that is going to encompass in cost, and then judge whether you feel it's of value or not. The cost benefit, I think, will be there, if they're going to be there for quite a few years, I think. I think the traffic will see nothing but increase as they start. So, like I say, I would, I, I would start with what would be ideal and maybe modify from that, should you find some questionable items that might be included. So, does that help?
Would that, would then, you have to purchase more right-of-way then at that time?
If you had to add turning lanes, it's likely you would have to purchase right-of-way on 23 at least, because that was built with a pretty tight right-of-way when that was built. I don't believe you went out and got any additional right-of-way when that was built. So it's likely you would need right-of-way there.
Oh, way before my time. And I remember, I think, heck, that was, was Governor Jankel the governor then? They didn't use any federal money. I always thought that feds always required 100 feet of right-of-way. So it surprises me that it's in a narrow right-of-way.
On state roads, they typically would go out and procure the right-of-way. If, the one thing to consider, if federal funds are involved, and I don't think there are any in this case, but if federal funds are involved, then you have to go through the process of right-of-way procurement under their rules, which typically takes at least a year, and normally, two years.
No, my point is that when they built that, I made a lot of state money, that, that, I can't believe they did it without any federal money. And I'm just surprised it wouldn't be 100-foot right-of-way, but maybe.
Yeah.
You know, I like Dick's idea there of, of, you know, designing it with those turning lanes in and see what we need to do, and see what those costs and where the price tag comes out. And, you know, after the chance, you get a chance to do more engineering out there and more look into it, so.
We'll also check the warrants to see if, if the traffic counts warrant the turning lanes, and then you can make that decision.
But wouldn't, the traffic counts will change, obviously, when they open up.
We will consider that in the traffic counts.
Traffic count and stuff there, too, so, okay.
At this time, I don't think we're prepared, because nothing's being built, but we get the word, we'll have to consider him, at your company. And I, I don't think anybody's authorizing to do more work at this time. But we definitely appreciate you coming and bringing us up to date and. Up to this point, what Kerry's given us here is kind of pro bono. It's just that we were putting, you were putting the whole package together for Novita, and we needed to have some ideas as to what the road would be and everything. And, you know, the consensus was, as we moved forward, we'd work with Kerry, but he was willing to put this information and, and, and cost estimates for us to give us some things to think about and work with, so. Any other questions for Kerry?
And we'll have a much better idea of the costs once we actually get into the engineering.
Once we get, once Novita starts construction, we know that we're going to definitely do the project. That's, that's, that's the big key in this whole situation, so. Well, Kerry, if, we will, we got your phone number, and if we got questions, we'll call you again.
Very good.
And by the same token, if you come up with something there, you think of something that you think that we might be interested in, or something for us to think about, feel free to contact us or just come to one of our meetings and discuss it with us.
If there is interest in widening the right-of-way in there, we could do a little more research on the utilities on that north side, if you'd like. But if there isn't, I mean, I see no reason to put extra effort into that at this time.
We, I think I'd need to be pushed off by a professional to say, oh, boy, you can't do this when 66 feet. I, I'm 66 feet in this.
Okay.
Yes. But we appreciate, we appreciate the information you've so graciously given us up to this point, so.
Thank you very much.
And, but like I said, feel free to come to us anytime of questions or if you've got a thought.
Okay.
And we'll do the same with you. We'll just maintain communication on the project.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Kerry. Vicki, from finance.
Just to kind of give you some updates on the finance office, our part-time gal started a couple of weeks ago, and that's going well. She's working 20 to 22 hours a week at this point, so that is helping. She's learning very fast, so that's going good. We had our position that since Stacy moved up and Kristen moved up to deputy, the other position in the finance office closed on Friday. We had over 50 applicants, so we have not gotten through those yet, or Laura hasn't. So I think that we'll have our work cut out for us to find somebody that will be the perfect fit. And with the absentees and the election gals working, they have done a great job. They've had 250 absentees, and they're setting up nursing homes to go to over this week and next week, so they'll be do, busy doing that. And also, when they aren't busy, we did have them do some scanning for the finance office, and now they're doing some scanning and indexing for the register of deeds office. And again, just to kind of reiterate what Joyce said, it's just so great to have department heads and people that work together. Joyce helped me when we switched over. She looked everything over to make sure that it balanced like I did. Stacy has been great to help our office out, and Bev and Abby, they have just been great. We've worked with Abby to do the resolution. And I know it sounds kind of redundant, but when you go to these meetings, other counties are, really don't have this. So it's just amazing how much more you can get done when everybody works together, so I appreciate that. And we've been starting to collect taxes. We've collected about $450,000 in property taxes this month. And we've been having webinars through Tyler, our software company, for setting up the tax levies, so that's been going on. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we've been doing. Just a busy month for our office. Any questions?
Questions for Vicki? Vicki, as long as we got you by the microphone, you have a, in a tax agreement on our list today. Is there any comments you want to make about that? It looks pretty standard to me.
Yeah, it's just a basic agreement. It's two years, and they've paid the first payment. It's just set up for three payments. It's just a basic agreement, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Martin? You're going to, you're going to defer? Okay. Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Quite a few of the things are past issues. The building update, Daniels would like to schedule a substantial completion meeting for Thursday of this week. It'll be, hopefully, they've been working really hard this week, and they've gotten a lot done. So, hopefully, he'll come through with that. My opinion would be, might be a little bit optimistic on Thursday, but definitely by mid to week of next week, we'll certainly see it, because a lot of it is done. The EPA gave us notice that we should have our permit for our box culvert up on 40 by the end of the week, and I didn't specify or ask specifically if he meant this week, or a week and months to come, but hopefully, it will be this, this week. You'll probably get some comments and questions, why do you wait till harvest to do this? However, in this case, the way the permit progressed, we really had our hands tied, and the bridge is only rated at four tons, so they can't use it anyway, the way it is. So, it's best to just get it done as soon as possible. So, I talked to Holloway Construction, who will be installing it, and he thought he'd either be able to start the end of this week, or the beginning of next week. So, hopefully, all this comes together, and, and we get the ball rolling on that. Then tonight, I'll be attending the planning and zoning meeting. Bob touched on that already, they're talking about the new dairy that'll be going in up on our Highway 40, three miles east of Highway 25. Pretty substantial project there, too. Our crews continue to do the fall mowing and hauling gravel, getting everything spruced up for, in preparation for winter. Next month, Banner will be presenting us our results of our bridge inspection report. We're doing some, we've completed everything that was requested of us in the last report, and again, they do this every other year, so we have plenty of time. Still doing a little work here and there on some bridges that are showing some deterioration. And we'll know more once they give the formal result, but again, my opinion would be, I would anticipate we'll have more structures that will have weight restrictions, and we'll also maybe have some, I've also started prioritizing some of the projects that you, the board has asked for, with the additional funds you're providing us next year, of what we'll address with that. And I'd like to wait till we get the inspections and see if Banners would concur with my priorities, and, and that'll make it a lot clearer for all of us to just wait till next month. But just so you're aware that, that the work is in the process. The surplus sale went pretty well, and, and by us, we judge it by what's left that we gotta take care of, not by the financial lucrative pot of money that, that we get. But we only had two tires left, and we only had three truckloads of junk to take to the rubble site. So, I, that was really remarkably better, and I think Stacy did a terrific job of getting the word out that we meant business, and this, this year with that concert, I never heard any complaints. We had it out of there, so I think that went well.
I went out there that Friday afternoon, too, and visited with Tom Richter, and yeah, he was very pleased with how it went, so.
Good, so I, I think it went well. And then I also met with Commissioners Wyeth, and Krogman, and Scott Moore from Banner, and Jerry from Sioux Valley Electric, and we're ironing out some of the nuts and bolts of the utilities out there on 34th Avenue, and hopefully, that will come together real quickly, too. So, other than that, I don't have any other information, unless you have questions.
Go ahead, Tom.
On the 40th, and this, this is, isn't for you, Dick, but for basically anybody in the county commission business, in the county business. Now, you, you mentioned on 40th that some are gonna question about the culvert work being done because of harvest. You know, being the hospitality side, we knew we were gonna have complaints, we tried to head them off with information. I was just wondering, would a letter to the neighboring landowners, the up and down, and just say, we will be doing this work, rather than just putting a sign up and let the coffee shop talk, go as it is? Say why it's being done now, and giving them a warning, and kinda take care of the complaints ahead of time?
I, I think immediately, the neighbors that are really impacted, the wind tower maintenance guys, Iverson's, which we got the construction easement from, and also Mersberg, and they've all been in touch with me, at least monthly, if not more often. If I was out there, I'd always stop and give them the heads up. I think they're aware of it, and they, they've actually shared my concerns, that they wish we could get the ball moving, too. Also, it's been roughly eight months, well, we turned the permit in January 6th, so since January of last year, we've had it posted. So, I, I guess I certainly can, I can send out a, a quick note to people, but for the most part, I, I think they'll just be so happy to see it get going, and, and if it goes anything like the other projects, you know, maybe three weeks at the most will be all we'll be looking at for time it's torn out, till the time it's open. And again, if, if you had a little higher rating, you might have some people inconvenienced, because, you know, they, they thought, well, God, I wish we would've known about this, but at four ton, you know, nothing more than a passenger vehicle barely can go across it, so. That helps, Tom, I, I don't know, I can still do, if you, if you so desire, I can.
Well, I guess I'll leave it to your judgment, but I just felt that if you have any landowners that are gonna be talking, you might as well send them a letter explaining the way, I'm, I'm just, not to everybody, I guess I'll leave it to your judgment. I think any department we have, if they know they're gonna work somebody up, why not send out a letter and give an explanation, and cut out the rumors, that's, or get the facts?
Okay. Any other questions, comments or questions?
I saw Stephanie's line, um, where are we at on the, on the visit with the right-of-way after our, our meeting?
Our visit with?
You, you visited with everybody, right, once, on the right-of-way on 34th?
Oh, all I did is made contact to make sure I had the right person to contact. I haven't did anything until we, I had a clear idea of what we were, but I, I contacted the one, because he's a friend of my neighbor, and Bo's, I talked to them, just to mention, we're kinda getting things together, and the same way, I found out I'm supposed to talk to Reed to start with, with Everest. So, that's what I mean, I've, I've, I know who's involved, and I know who to get a hold of to do it, but I think it would be very beneficial to wait until we have a clear understanding of exactly what we're going to be, before we would call it a no, negotiation conversation, so to speak. What I would call, what I've done, is just a social conversation to kinda put them in the loop, and let them know what will be coming.
That's great, that's what I, I mean, the pre-sale is, I guess, before you, is that you just warn them that it's progressing. They're probably wondering that's a year or two behind, anyway. And they're probably wondering, what is it, is this gonna happen or not? And say it's, you know, so they can mentally prepare themselves and not guard and make life miserable when you visit with them.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Dick.
You're welcome.
I see we have a 9:30, but Mr. Rowland isn't here. Marty, do you wanna continue to yield, or you wanna? You're fine. Nothing to report? Oh, things are going good. Ah. Okay, well, we'll move forward, and when Mr. Rowland gets here, we'll, we'll work with item B under number seven. Getting down to our regular business. Item A is action to approve agreement 1472, which is a delinquent tax agreement in the amount of $910.11, it sure would entertain a motion.
Moved.
Moved by Miller, I believe, and second by Wyeth. Discussion, please call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item B, we had good information in our packet, this is agreement 14-73, and this is our Delta Dental rate increase, sure would entertain a motion. Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman, Commissioner Krogman. Any discussion?
I have to say that, at first blush, when I saw, I think, 22%, I just about had a heart attack. Thankfully, it was dropped down. I, I realize that we have rate increases on insurances, but I hope they don't think that we're gonna end up going that high at some point in time.
We hope not, I think it ended up at like 5% for Delta Dental, so.
I think our insurance rate increases this year were pretty, pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
I do have a question, though, I'm along the insurance line, and I see Wellmark's next, and I tried to garner, oh, I didn't read this one, yeah, yeah, I did, too. Do we buy it from an agency, or direct, or how, how, how do we get this insurance? Do we?
It's directly through Delta Dental.
Through Delta Dental.
But Wellmark, do we buy it directly from them, or do we go through an agency? When I got on the school board, just as an experience, they were all excited. They had saved all this money by going to a company that packages Wellmark and other insurance companies into a big group, I forget the name of the company. And, and they saved gobs of money, and they were just hopping up and down. This happened before I got on the board, and then, just before I got off, six years later, they were concerned about the rates, so they went out and farmed it out, and then they came back cheaper again. It was like they learned a lesson that they weren't guaranteed the business, and the, the rates were cheaper again. So, there's different ways of getting this insurance, and maybe the county, this was a school district organization that packaged this up, but maybe there's something out there, maybe there's other ways of letting them know they're not the only way that we can take care of our employees.
We have to be really careful, though, now with the Health Act, the Obamacare. We're grandfathered in, yes, we're grandfathered in right now.
Yes, and maybe that's.
And as soon as we start making changes, then we have to start complying with some of the requirements of that act.
That, that's an excellent point, but I just don't wanna be taken advantage of, I guess, as they, well, they gotta do business with us, so it, it doesn't hurt to shop around, I guess.
Well, I think, you know, for right, I mean, we're into this process, and we'll do this year. I think earlier next year, we can look, I, I agree with you, I mean, but you start bouncing from one company to the other, all of a sudden, they give you a low rate, and then they raise it, and then, oh, you're trying to get back. So, I think it's something worth checking into, if, if it's a bundle thing, you can save some money, and.
And, and some of them, well, they're not, you're not gonna jump around, because usually, they want two or three-year contracts, and so, you're comparing two or three-year contracts, so it's not every year. Because they don't wanna go through all the work of setting you up for one year, and then have you run to somebody else the next year, but usually, it makes them more competitive.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you, Tom, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number C is agreement 1474, with our regards to our Wellmark premiums. The information is in your packet, sure would entertain a motion. Moved by Krogman, second by Miller, right?
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Discussion.
This went up just 3.1%.
Yeah, I mean.
Our health insurance did, so we're very, very fortunate for that.
We are.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Falcon? Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item D is the action to approve agreement 1475, and this is our planned service agreement with Johnson Controls for the courthouse, and this has been an ongoing agreement that we've had for a number of years, and we had quite a bit in our, in our packet, a lot of information. So, for the purpose of action, the chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Commissioners, discussion, questions? Anything from staff or legal?
The rate on this actually stayed the same for the next year as it is this year, and then it goes up, this is a three-year agreement, and then it goes up, you know, a little bit the next couple of years, but the rate for this upcoming year stayed the same as it is now, that we're currently paying, so.
And all the staff that's involved with them and their contract and their service are satisfied, and things are going?
Yes.
Very satisfied, okay. Because I, I mean, I wouldn't know, I mean, I see their agreement, what they're charging, but what their service is, you would have to refer to the staff.
John works very closely with them and has a good working relationship with those folks.
They, you know, you got Johnson Controls, and you got Siemens are the, and it seems like you get a working relationship established with either one of those good companies, and it, it becomes kind of a long-term relationship, so. Any other questions, comment? Please call the roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
There is one thing, Stacy, that sometime when they're, if their individual is in the area on a meeting day, and we should invite them to stop in, Johnson Controls used to stop by our meetings every once in a while, and visit with us. Okay, item E is the agreement 1476, this is the Brookings County hazardous material plan. For the purpose of discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman, and we get a little staff report. Bob, did you have anything, or are you just there for, in case we have a question of you?
Well, what we got is the hazardous materials plan had to be completed by the end of September. It was completed the week prior, and we had it on display for public review during our National Preparedness Day event. And the document is complete, it's in my office, any citizens welcome to come and review it. They have to make an appointment to come in, make sure I'm, I'm there with them, and basically, the hazardous materials plan shows all the reportable chemicals in Brookings County. But you have to realize, when it says reportable, the Environment Protection Agency has standards on how much propane, or how much diesel a, a company has before it becomes reportable. So, we got a lot more companies in Brookings County that has chemicals than what's in our hazardous materials plan, because they don't have it in large, large quantities. But the plan's complete, the plan's available, and I request that you adopt it, or pass the resolution, so we can, and we will receive payment, we had to pay first Planning District to do the plan for us, and then we're gonna be reimbursed by the State of South Dakota.
Okay, thanks, Bob, any questions for Bob? Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Our next item on the agenda is agreement 1477, and Abby, I, I have to have you refresh my memory, did, could we call it 1477A, B, and C, or do we have to do it individually?
I would do them individually.
Pardon?
I would do them individually.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion for agreement 1477A. Moved by Krogman?
Second.
Second by Miller. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon? Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, the chair would entertain a motion for 1477B.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Wyeth, second by Krogman. Please call the roll.
Falcon? Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And finally, the chair would entertain a motion on agreement 14-77C. Moved by Falcon?
Second.
Second by Miller. Please call the roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number G. I'm expecting a lot of discussion and a lot of question on this one. Moved by... Item number G is permission to conduct a raffle. Moved by Miller. Second by Falcon. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hold on here.
I don't know how you're doing both over there.
You're doing a great job.
Hold on. Okay, Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon. Wyeth.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item H is the action to approve the payment application request number three in the amount of eleven thousand nine seventy to Daniels Residential Incorporated for discussion. I would entertain a motion. Moved by Krogman.
Second.
Second by Wyeth. Discussion? Dick, do you have any comments you want to make on this?
No, just other than that's fine, and we still have probably fifty percent of the building yet to bill out. So we've got a lot of retainage on this project, so I think we're safe to go ahead and pay it.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon. Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number I is the action to approve the request to fill vacancy for IT support technician.
So moved.
Moved by Miller.
Second.
Second by Krogman. Any discussion, comments from any board members on this? Staff? Stacy, did you have anything you wanted?
No, I think we've discussed this, and this would be what we've discussed as a tier-one IT support technician that would assist the specialist Sean with more of the help desk-type work, so he can concentrate a little bit more on our bigger issues, so.
Goodly number of applications.
What's that?
A goodly number of applications?
We haven't posted it yet. We have to... Yeah, we'll post it today or tomorrow. We'll post it.
Laura was sitting there with, it looked like a Sears and Roebuck catalog yesterday of applications.
I think that was Vicky's position, the finance officer position that was open where we had fifty, yeah. After this is approved, then we'll go ahead and post it for a couple of weeks and get applications.
Everybody understand, except me?
Wade Grage, is that similar to what we had before, or?
Well, this is a brand-new position, so we discussed that.
Okay, I didn't know if we had... All right.
Get your question answered, right? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We talked about item J, and if I'm understanding, and the board is in agreement that by consensus, we support the Community Opportunity Initiative. So by consensus. Then item K, action to approve resolution fourteen forty-five, and this is to remove any county liens that have not been paid... Have not had any activity since nineteen seventy prior. And I think you have a list of those that were provided to you this morning. Moved by Wyeth. Second by Falcon. Any discussion? For our newer commissioners, you understand what we're doing is just cleaning up the books and getting rid of the uncollectibles. And years ago, and back in this vintage even, we had a lot of people with the same name, but we didn't have any further identification such as social security numbers or anything to go by. So if there were three Ryan Krogmans in the county, and we'd give one assistance, we had no idea which one it was, so.
I wonder if Ryan was even born in nineteen ninety-seven. Kind of torched me off, but I was just thinking...
Pretty close.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number L is our action to approve our resolution fourteen forty-six, and this is the resolution to continue our support and work with the First District Association of Local Governments. Chair would entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Wyeth. Second by Krogman. Please call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon. Wyeth.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Moving on, item number nine is our commission department director report. And there again, Stacy, I'll give you the option, if you'd like to come down to the table and present, or you're welcome to do it right where you're at with where you got all your stuff.
Eventually, I will... Eventually, I will move down. The first thing is, I contacted Robert Tim with the Cheeseman Foundation, talked about the strategic planning session. Included is a draft agreement. The contract that we had with them initially has expired, and they're asking for more money to come back for a half-day session to finish what we've started. He did provide me with the draft copy of what has already been done, so I have that, and I've had a chance to look at that. I guess I need your direction on whether or not you want to spend more money to have them come back for a half-day, or do you want me to take that, what we have, and work with the department heads and see if we can get something put together from the information that we already have.
Mr. Chair, I am not in favor of spending any more money. I think that we've spent enough of the taxpayers' money on that, and I think we have enough information to go forth, doing exactly what you just said, with you dealing with the department heads, and then we meet and decide what we're gonna do.
Well, I'm with you there, no way. And I guess I would be talked into maybe find somebody in the community to pick it up and finish it, or guide us through the process. But I'm willing to go with your suggestion, Stacy. But I'm willing to listen to somebody else if they... I know Ryan just loves this process, and that's fine. I mean, never quit learning, but...
No, I don't want to pay the money either. I think it's too much, and I think it's ridiculous they're asking for us to pay more, in my opinion, so. So I don't want to do that. I think we can finish this up. We've had good discussion. I think Stacy can, you know, maybe lead us through something. Maybe we take a half a day, and we sit down and discuss it with everybody, and try to finalize this out, and Stacy can kind of lead us through it, I guess, of what we've done. So, no, I'm... I want to get something done for the county of planning processes, long-term, and for strategy down the road. It can change every year, but you know what? I think we need to get something started. I'm not in favor of hiring these guys back to finish it up. I think we can handle that.
I think if Stacy can do it, that'd be fantastic, but I will have to admit, I have to do my homework, because where we left off, it's in a pile, under piles. I know where it's at, but...
We have that draft, and I don't know that that has been even given out to the department heads, from what I understand. I don't think they've seen it, so I think one of the first steps is getting that sent out to them and see if they agree with what we have as a draft, and then work with them and you to come up with the plan.
I think send that to all of us.
Yes.
Okay, I think we have a consensus, and I agree, and Ryan, for your sake, I think we're well on our way all already with our little to-do list, our projects that we're working on, we're reporting. We've got... That's kind of a moving document as well. And if we take some time, I think we can conclude this thing to the benefit of the county. Dennis?
Yeah, and I agree. I think we have the information. And the department heads, we need to spend a half a day or a day, or whatever it takes, to meet with them individually, talk about the issues that... The things that came up about where we're gonna prioritize that, and I don't think we need any more, you know, out of the county or out of the... Our departments to move forward with this, to put our plan together, to, you know, to see where we're going in the future.
Okay. Stacy, I'll let you continue. I think you got some direction there.
I put in the updated two thousand fifteen calendar. I made those changes. I think we looked... There was just a couple tweaks for in February and March, so if you are okay with that... Let me find it here. Here we go. I will go ahead and get that information sent out. I know our finance office needs that right away, too, to make sure that they have their dates moving forward for payroll and claims, and get that out to everybody so they can plan on... Plan ahead for next year. This that I had... Vicky and I have also talked about publishing this piece of information. At first, I kind of had, kind of copied what Brown County had done in the form of a brochure, and then researching the cost of doing something like that. It was pretty expensive to do that. So I came up with this flyer of information, just general information about the election here coming up in November. The vote center locations, just some questions that people ask. And I guess I'm just kind of looking for direction. You know, Vicky and I discussed, I got some pricing on it. This isn't considered a legal ad, so we're not required to publish it in our legal newspapers, per se. I mean, it's more informational, public service. We thought, you know, getting it out, you know, to as many people as possible, how we would do that. So if it's something that you want to look at, you know, Vicky and I kind of working together in publishing this leading up to the election.
Mr. Chair, the town and country shopper that will do inserts in there, and that, it is... I think it's forty-five dollars a thousand to do it, and you can say where you want it to go. Like, it can go to every town in Brookings County? And that might be a good avenue, because everybody gets that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. Well, first of all, I asked Stacy, and I got... This is a cool piece.
Yes, it is. It's very good.
I really like it, and we spend a fortune on elections, and I was a follow-through and get the word out. And I like your idea of being an insert of cost. You got the cost of printing, the insert, besides the cost of inserting it, but people can take and set it aside. And you know, they don't have to cut it out. It can be laying there up to... Around their house, wherever they want, to remind them on election day. They don't have to dig through all their old papers to find out where was that article. And so I like the idea of the insert, other than the additional cost of the printing, but... I'm just incredibly cheap, because I'm in business. I look at the inserts, but...
It's minimal there, and you already have what you want. So I don't think that it would be too much, but it's just food for thought. I know that we would have that option, and I think that would be a good way to reach all voters.
I could contact the shopper and see what it would cost to print up something and get this inserted, to... And do a circulation of the county. I'd hate to exclude rural folks. Get it sent out to all Brookings County.
Yes.
I know they have circulation outside the county, so we wouldn't need to do that.
They do, and we wouldn't need to use that.
But all Brookings...
And the reason that I say that, as opposed to any of the other papers, is because everybody gets the shop.
Right. I'll look into that and see what the cost would be. Okay. Let's see, what else? additional to staff report. Let me go back to my... Just a reminder, your conservation district tour is this afternoon. It is at two-thirty. You're gonna meet at the FSA office. That's kind of out front, right by the movie theater there on Sixth Street. Some discussion on the coroner's position. This is an elected position. Nobody filed to run as coroner, even though in two thousand sixteen, it'll be up for reelection for a four-year term. I did publish it for this year as to finish the remaining two years of a four-year term. We still didn't get anybody to file a petition. So I don't know if Marty wants to speak to this at all. As well, what you've been doing is just annually appointing somebody to that position. I don't know that you've ever requested applications for that appointment. Keep in mind, this is an elected position, so at some point, somebody could run for this and be elected to it. But you have two years yet remaining now, and you'll appoint January one. I don't know if Marty, if you had anything else, if you wanted to add anything to it, what your thoughts were on it.
Well, why... I was talking to Stacy about it, is there is another person that's interested in the coroner's position, and things have went well this past year. And so I don't know what the commission would like to do if there's... We've been appointing annually the coroner, and, you know, I don't know. There was some discussion about doing the applications, and if anybody's interested in that. So I guess it's up to you how you want to do it. I've not discussed with the present coroner if she wants to do it for another year or anything like that either. It's just... I had an individual call me and ask the question, what the commission was gonna do for the upcoming year, and I said that I'd have to get back to him. I think one thing we may look at, we should maybe look at, is the salary of it. We've not increased that salary for quite a while. I have a little... I put a little extra money in there if that's the wishes of that, too, to... You know, it's pretty minimum wage. We do... You know, when you look around the state and stuff, it's... The coroner doesn't make much money at this. It stems from ever a hundred dollars a call to a hundred and fifty dollars a call or a straight salary, and we've always did a straight salary. Most of the time, it... I think that they don't do it to make money, of course. They do it because they want to serve the community in some way, and that's their way of doing it, so that'd be something we may want to look at, too.
Stacy, is this something we should put on our list? Because we're in a... With the coroner's position, it is an election cycle. Is that correct?
It is, but no one filed a petition.
Right, so we have to appoint someone to fill...
We still have to appoint, right.
The unexpired term, or whatever.
And you've been doing the appointments annually, but you could choose to... You could take applications. You could choose to appoint it for the remaining two years of the four-year term, and then in two thousand sixteen is when petition... That'll come up for reelection for a four-year term again.
Anybody that wants to can run for coroner.
Yes.
So... Why don't we put that on our little work session worksheet, kind of create a strategy for it?
Well, it'll only be for two years.
There's some state standards, though. I mean, not anybody can be a coroner. You've got to go training. You've got to have... You've got to have some background to be a coroner, correct? And the state has some standards that...
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Once you're elected or appointed coroner, there's a school that you have to go to.
I think the ones that have been, didn't have to do it, but I think through law enforcement standards, they've set some criteria for coroners to be able to, you know, to meet some certain standards. But maybe we need to check on that before we get...
I can do some checking on that. I guess I'm not aware of anything right off the top of my head for... To run for...
Abby, you know anything about this?
I was just looking at the statutes right now as we were discussing, and I think we're... You know, I'll follow up with Marty, and we'll do some double-checking, but I think where the discretion lies is it's an elected office. So a lot of people can run for a lot of things. It just depends on who we want to vote for.
So you get enough petition signatures, you can run for coroner?
Well, I do think it's important, and that's a pretty important position. What a coroner puts on a death certificate is a pretty important decision to make.
Absolutely.
You know, and you just can't have somebody like Tom. I'm just, you know...
Bob.
Yes, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, as all it states, is all newly-selected county coroners must attend the sixteen-hour training program within one year of appointment. All incumbent county coroners must complete eight hours of advanced training every two years.
Well, I'll tell you what, Ryan, it's a lot harder to be a real estate agent than it is a county coroner.
I don't know about that. But I... But we don't... We still don't know if our present coroner will do... Will be willing to stay there for another year or two, or something like that. I think the question needs to be asked if she's willing to stay on. I'd like to get it back to an elected position, if she'd stay on for two years, and then she can decide if she wants to run. Anybody else can decide if they want to run. At least get us there and keep the status quo, but...
Yeah.
I mean, that's just my gut, but I don't feel strongly either way, I guess, so.
I just wonder how many elected coroners...
I just wonder how many elected coroners there are. I mean, I do a lot of hunting during the election season. I'm seeing signs all over the state as I go duck and goose. I've only seen one coroner sign in my life, way out west somewhere, but I'd wonder how many are elected.
But I guess, you know, if, if in two years, we don't have anybody go for coroner, then we take applications. We say it's open, maybe we advertise for it and, and we can do something there on a, you know, two-year basis or something like that. So I don't know if we need to go through that process.
Let's put it on our little work, work list and come up with a little plan. Maybe, maybe the plan we come up with is what Ryan just suggested.
And in the interim, I think it would be important for us to know if our current coroner was planning on continuing.
I'll visit with her.
Next, we have the quilt that used to hang in the stairwell of the courthouse between first and second floor. A group of quilters, including one of our own employees here at the courthouse, has, they've redone that quilt. They've taken it and restored that quilt or fixed it. And now we're looking for a place to put it. Obviously with the courts now being a courthouse for court, for the courts, we don't know that as many, you know, the public gets over there now as much as they used to when some of the county offices were there. So that, and then the plaque that has, includes all the names of, for the Avenue of Flags, that also is here and we would like a home for that as well. We've looked at, I know Mike is still here and he can maybe speak to some of the, you know, ideas that we had to display that in this building. I'm not sure if that's something that needs to also maybe go through the joint powers board if we're going to put something up on a wall in one of the common spaces of this building. I don't know, I guess we're kind of just looking for direction if that's something that we need to take to the joint powers board.
Would that not be something for joint powers?
I think, I think as a courtesy, the joint powers board should be contacted and, and see what they have to say.
Okay.
Okay, we're done with the quilt for the moment.
Okay. The flu shot clinic, if you're interested yet, you can still sign up. That's going to be on October sixteenth. You can sign up with Michelle down in the commission office for a time. We need a number so we know how much of the vaccine that we need to get in. The health fair is scheduled for October thirtieth. I believe that's going to start at seven o'clock in the morning and run until about eleven o'clock. Laura has been working with Donna from the city, coordinating that effort for all city and county employees.
Is there a food pantry thing or something?
There is, I think, once again, going to be a competition between the city and county employees donating food to the food shelf. The county won last year. We have a really neat trophy, so we'd like to keep that. So yes, please bring donations for the food shelf for that. Also included in your packet was that lengthy lean government presentation that some of you maybe took part in at the convention in September. So that is included in there. You met Sean, our IT support specialist, started with us yesterday. Tentative date for youth in government is December second. I believe that is a regular commission meeting date. And then I think the students go around and meet with department heads as well and tour this facility and maybe sit on, in part of our, our meeting here. But that, tentatively, that is scheduled for December second. I think we have the hobo day parade. Everybody's doing their own thing, so I don't have to worry about making reservations for any of you. And I think that's all that I have for now, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions? Thanks, Stacy. I liked your report. It was brief, to the point and well stated. Abby, Deputy State's Attorney.
I do have a few questions for the board as to topics that pertain to some of the work session topics. Would you prefer I wait till they come up at that time or address them now?
I guess I, I'll leave that at your discretion. We can, we can get through them in the work session. Will they, are they going to take some time?
No, it's basically questions on how the board wants me to proceed on a couple items that I've gotten some instruction on.
If it's all right with you, we can move into our work session. We'll just.
Yeah, the only other, before we get into that, the only other comment I would make is that I, I do plan on attending the planning zoning meeting tonight with Mr. Hill and Commissioner Wyseff. There will be an attorney present for one of the matters, so I'd like to be there to represent the county in that instance. On Friday, I will be in Pure, working at a continued legal education seminar on behalf of the state bar. And just so the commission doesn't think we're ever slow in our office, we had approximately two hundred files processed through the court system yesterday. So Clyde and I, we're busy. But aside from that, I'm ready to move into the work session topics with you.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Wyseff?
Okay, I'll keep it short because Ryan needs to go and I don't have my notebook anyway, so you won't hear all my social engagements. On the thirtieth, we met on the road and you kind of heard that report. I met with Southeastern Behavior with the Executive Committee of East Central and ten or eleven questions came out of that. It was good exercise of information. That afternoon, I took off for Sioux Falls and Growth Partnership had their meeting at Sioux Falls at the research center there. We went over to the Gear Center and met with their board and I'm not sure if they shared much information with us that was valuable. In fact, after their, we got a nice drawings of what their place is going to look like. And afterwards, one of our board members, they say, "Have any questions?" Yeah, the question, "What's your business plan?" And so I think we gave more information than we received, but you never know. Now, I guess we could have picked up on that. And when's our next nine eleven planning, uh, meeting? Isn't it in October? I haven't heard anything.
Pardon?
Don, nine one one, isn't it in October? And shouldn't we be hearing something?
Yeah, we should be in October.
And then you've heard planning zonings tonight. And we've got two big ones. We have a dairy, fifty-five hundred head, which is generally, it's going to be a, I think hopefully a smooth experience. There's one little wrinkle in there, I noticed. Otherwise, it should go pretty well. Now, this other situation that Abby's referring to with the other attorney, this is unusual. We're going to allow a reconsideration of a conditional use permit. Usually you got to wait six months. And we may have a kink in our bylaws that we need to take a look at in the future to prevent this kind of situation. It had to do with attendance of members and the way we write our rules. And what we have may be fine, maybe not, but that's, it's a reconsideration. Pretty rare, isn't it, Robert? I mean, you've been around.
It started the second one in tenure.
Oh, you're looking for something to do from seven till about two in the morning, stop over and we'll have.
It, it does start at eight and we're projected to be done by three AM.
I like seven o'clock, but yeah, eight o'clock, yeah. Thanks. I've been here early.
That's it? Mr. Krogman?
All right, twenty-ninth, I had a hospital board meeting. We had that actually at the Dick House Center there and we've toured the new facility there, so that's pretty cool. But they wouldn't let us on the track yet. They're still painting, so it's like, you got to look through the window. Pretty cool though, man. It's a, it's a great facility and one of a kind, it sounds like, so. And then met with banners like we talked about there on the road and got some positive feedback from our friends with Sioux Valley. And they were going to talk about, they had, they're varying some, some transition things, boxes, but their costs are only like, what, a fifty bucks, eighty bucks a piece to do it. So very low cost there. And then they're going to build up a couple poles to make there. But he said their leadership was leaning towards staying with our, our right of way and not having to make us move the poles with an agreement that if we did widen that road to a three-lane eventually down the road and we had to move them, that would be our expense like it is right now anyway. So we're, but we're waiting to hear back for sure. He was not given the okay. He's going to let us know. And if we move ahead, then we're, get the okay from Sioux Valley, I think that's going to be a good thing, so. But right now, it's, it's looking back. Is that what you guys kind of come up with?
Yeah, that, that's the next, I should, yeah, I'm glad you brought those points up. And there is a timeline, it's still.
Still getting there.
Yeah, getting there, not as fast as we'd like, but it's still in, within the parameters of Sioux Valley making the notification and getting all the stuff from Banner, but, and it was a real positive meeting. It sounded like we could buy in the cheap. We do have to pick up extra easement while we're getting the right of way for the future as part of the agreement with Sioux Valley that someday.
They didn't make, no, they didn't, no, they didn't. They just asked, we, we said we were going to try to do that, okay? So because if, that's part of the problem, if we decide to make that down the road, you know, bigger and we don't have the easements, then we got to go back and negotiate those easements. And as long as we're talking to those same landowners, we're going to try to get an easement for it. Will we get them all? I don't know. But, you know, it, it wasn't something that we said that we, that they wanted done, otherwise they wouldn't move.
It's just going to have to be done on a future commission while we're out there. And so far, the easements are cheap. It's the right of way though, costs money.
Okay, so that was a good meeting. And then on the third, I attended the Bell Brands ribbon cutting there. That was a very good event and very nice event. And the people that came from the parent company were some pretty high-ups. One CEO of Bell Group, which runs the whole thing, is like, you know, the guy for the whole thing. And that was, and great to have them fly all the way over here and celebrate it, so. But a lot of good things there. You know, Governor was there and Senator Thune, Representative Noem, we're all there and stuff too, and Mike Rounds was there too, so. And then went on to the three M one also with their expansion. So a great day for Brookings, Brookings County. Lot of jobs, lot of investment. And it's, it was a very, very good day and, you know, and we got a lot of press out of it and a lot of positive from everybody, so it's a good thing, so. That's it.
I guess I'm glad one commissioner went in light of the fact that we didn't get an invitation. Obviously not. On September twenty-fifth, I attended the surplus sale. It's always kind of interesting. At two o'clock, I went to the RSVP and foster grandparent volunteer recognition. And at three thirty, I attended a domestic abuse meeting where we finalized our two thousand and fifteen budget and issues with funding. At seven o'clock that night, I had an extension board meeting and where the board, as requested, did a needs and wants board. And I have copies of those as well as a letter from the SDSU extension. And I have a, kind of a rough drawing, so we'll discuss that at our work session, I'm guessing. On the twenty-sixth, I attended the sheep growers reception at McCroy Gardens. It was kind of interesting. I am not a sheep eater, but they had, they had booths with it prepared differently. And I did actually find one that I liked, so I, it surprised me. It was, it was fun. On the twenty-ninth, I attended the rendering meeting for the new beef complex and the swine complex, which was interesting. And then on the twentieth, or on the thirtieth, I came to the preparedness event here and that was nicely done, Bob. And I think it was a good move to have it downstairs. And I'm really excited that I won the weather radio. I never win anything and I wanted one so bad. On October first, I went to the Dashil Lot reception and the discussion then on how much partisanship is too much, that was outstanding. Both Mr. Dashil and Lot worked the room and talked to people at the reception. And then I, I wish that everybody could have heard their discussion because it was really, really interesting. And I, I think that if there was more of their work together attitude in Washington, we would get a lot more done. And I'm very, very happy that we, as a board, work together the way we do in a non-partisanship manner to accomplish the good things that we accomplish for Brookings County. On October third, I attended the groundbreaking for the new swine unit. That was very well attended and lots of excitement going on there, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Falcon?
Yeah, it's been a busy couple weeks here again. I indicated earlier, on the twenty-fourth, on the twenty-fourth, I did attend the first district meeting in Watertown. Did the evaluation and set the salary for the, our director, Mr. Hayes, Hayes up there. Well-attended meeting, but I did attend that. And then on the twenty-sixth, I also attended Taste of Lamb and maybe I've got a different taste bud than Commissioner Miller, but I didn't find anything I didn't like.
I did.
Well, I, I mean, it was prepared, unbelievable. It's, they had quite a few and it was a great event. And I, and I think that you get a chance to talk to producers that you don't probably run across very often, and so it was a great event, I thought. And then on the twenty-ninth, I did go to the informational public meeting on the cow calf and the swine projects up on campus. Wasn't very well attended by the public, but it surely gave me an insight of exactly what they're going to build and the timeframes and the big, the big stuff happening up there. Very interesting. And then on the thirtieth, I did come down for the national preparedness and kind of walked around, looked at some of the information and just, you know, it's kind of shocking when you look at some of that stuff. Bob had all these jugs of water and he said, "This is what, three days worth of water." And I'm going, "I don't drink that much water in a month." But as a family, I imagine that's, that's what it takes. You don't think about that kind of stuff, you know, when you need preparedness. So thanks, Bob, and your staff for putting that on. And I think it was kind of a captive audience when you walked in the door. You needed to, so it was, it was a great, great event, great space to have that, so. Then on the first, I did again, attend the Dashil Lot lecture, again, with Commissioner Miller. Those two gave a perspective of different side of getting along and how they wish both parties could spend time talking instead of, you know, arguing about issues. And then on the second, I attended the mayor's volunteer board appreciation that was held out at the new city center out there at the old landfill. And if you haven't had the opportunity to be out in that building and be out in that area, and I had not been in that building before, it's unbelievable. The views and the, just go out there and just walk, you know, just wander around. A lot of people were doing that, but it was a nice event. And then on the third, I did again, attend the groundbreaking of the swine unit. The governor was there and, and windy and cold, they had a nice tent set up. And again, a lot of great, you know, conversations on what's coming up with that, with that swine unit that's in much needed replacement of the current facility and what they're going to have out there and so. That's the other thing. So it's a lot of events and a lot of stuff going on and, and Brookings is moving.
Okay, thanks, Danny. Pretty much attended the, basically the same events that everyone else has. But yeah, I'm, I'm with Danny. The public meeting on the new cow calf and swine units was, was interesting. Unfortunately, if us three commissioners hadn't have shown up, I think they would have had one or two other non-university people there and, and which was a little unfortunate. Had the Chamber of Government Affairs meeting and of course, that, a lot of time was spent there getting ready for the, the candidate forums, those things and talking about some of the rules and regulations that we've got coming down and some of the changes being made. Then I did, of course, attend the groundbreaking for the, the swine unit. And like many of the rest of you, I attended the Dashil Lot event. Once again, it was very informative and you've done a good job of, of covering that. I think those are the, are the primary things. I think it's a season of receptions and lectures, but that's okay. There's something going on in this community all the time. And, you know, as I, I see the, the community of Bruce and they're talking about their farmer's market potential and that's what we need is our small communities to get involved. A lot of these things that they can do to, to improve their quality of life as well. So that pretty much covers what I have done. And does anyone else have anything they forgot or that they'd like to bring forward for the good of the order before? or that they'd like to bring forward for the good of the order, before we adjourn our regular session and go into our work session?
Well, we just, we, we, I don't know yet if I will be able to.
And Ryan, I also realize you're on kind of a time schedule this morning, so as we re, as we start our work session, if there's anything particular that you need to report or bring us up to date on, on your line, why we'll, we'd sure accommodate you. With that, we'll declare the meeting adjourned, does anybody want a couple minutes before we get into the work session? Okay.